I would call a regular meeting of the board's two boards, please. Would you all please rise to join me in the class?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This time, do you need to inform you that 6:30 PM we had a meeting with legislators and executives session? Me and Mrs. Slager, would you please follow me up?
Mrs. Elder, here. Mr. Patterson.
Here.
Mrs. Elder, here. Dr. Loughlin. Here. Dr. Malloch.
Here.
Mr. Muse.
Here.
Mr. Palmer.
Here.
Dr. Doolittle.
Here.
Thank you, Mrs. Slager. Hearing of visitors, part one is the part of our agenda that permits the audience to come to the podium and address the board about anything that is on tonight's agenda, to comment on anything that's on tonight's agenda before we would vote on that. So if anyone wishes to address the board on any of the resolutions on tonight's agenda, please approach the podium and state your name and address. Seeing no one, I will move for adoption of resolution number 170, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held January 22nd, 2013. The committee, the whole meeting, held February 12th, 2013. Second. It's been moved in seconded, we adopt resolution number 170, approval of minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Solicitors report, Mr. Higginson.
No report.
Thank you. Legislative report, Dr. Loughlin. And just as you said, we have the Senate Ward and Representative Tim Krager give track by my grease, where we discussed funding and bills that affect public education. Thank you, Dr. Loughlin. Education and planning will begin with the student report. Blair Warner, I have the vote. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Last Saturday, February 16th, Key Club held their annual pancake breakfast from 8:00 AM till noon, right here in the CSC. This year, the proceeds benefited 2011 Fairlil' Treb graduate RJ Thomas to help him aid in medical treatment. I was able to get in contact with RJ, and he offered to give a share of summary of his story and the inspiring work that he's been partaking in with his treatment. Here's what he sent in. "My balance disorder started in January 2001 when I was just eight years old. It was caused by a virus that settled in my brain between the cerebellum and the pons. My balance deteriorated rapidly in the coming months, but in April 2001, I had my first neurologist appointment at Children's Hospital in Pittsburgh. At the time of the appointment, I was unable to walk without falling unless someone was holding on to me. After seeing Doctor Painter, I was admitted to the hospital where I began receiving IV steroids. At the end of the week, my balance and ability to walk were almost back to normal, and the doctors thought by putting me on the steroids again would help even more. But this wasn't the case. My body built up an immunity to the IV, and the second round had little to none effect. After about four months, the steroids began to wear off, and my abilities started to deteriorate again. I took another turn for the worse when I developed scoliosis in ninth grade, but my pre-existing condition prevented the surgery needed to straighten my back. At graduation, someone was needed for stability, but after just one year at Williamsburg University, someone was needed to keep me from falling altogether, and I was almost completely wheelchair-bound. In August 2012, my mom was watching Nightline NBC, and there was a segment on Dr. Ted Carrick from Life University in Marietta, Georgia, and the work he was doing with a week-long series of treatments called functional neurology, where the brain is retrained to function around the body's injured areas. We thought Dr. Carrick could help me, so we wrote to him, and after three months, he responded saying he would be able to help improve my walking and the quality of life by having me come down for the last week of November. In that week, I made many improvements. My speech became clearer and smoother, my thought processes became quicker, my head didn't move as much when I was sitting still. I am now a lot steadier on my feet, and my walking has improved. They gave me exercises to do at home and invited me back at the end of January. I can now take steps one after the other, and am working on linking them together. I've been religiously completing my exercises at home, hoping for continued improvement when I head back down to Georgia at the end of April. Last Saturday, hundreds of students and people from the community showed up for the pancake breakfast. For just $5, they received unlimited pancakes and sausage to help out on such an extraordinary mission. My friends and I even made a little contest out of it, seeing who could eat the most, with the winner being 15. In total, the Key Club raised over $3,500 for RJ's treatment. And in conclusion, I just wanted to say that this is one of those things that makes me proud to be a student here at Fairlil' Treb." What?
Alright, moving down to room roll number three on your agenda, just the events that are coming up within the next month of the school. The second annual Polar Fluzza will be held this Friday, February 22nd, from 3:45 to 10:30. The main events include soccer, badminton, volleyball, and basketball, and a few video games. The DJ will also be in attendance to add to the excitement. And the overall winning team will be rewarded with six loaded high date tickets. And then jumping down to room roll number five, High Day t-shirts are currently on sale, and the winning design is created by senior Heather Avery, and there's a picture attached to your agenda. The t-shirts will be on sale up until next Friday, and they're $6, and then they will be worn on March 15th when we celebrate High Day at the CSC. And that concludes student reports.
Thank you both very much. Any questions?
Block the t-shirts.
Block the t-shirts. Minutes from the curriculum committee meeting was held last Tuesday evening, before the meetings, before regular, before the committee, the whole meeting. I am number one in the packet. We will be voting on some of these things, so, for instance, we're creating a ninth-grade sculpture class for art, and... We also discussed the school calendar, you will be voting on that. And I might know the draft of the 2013-14 calendar, even though it's not being voted on this month, there is a draft in holders for you to approve, and we would be voting on that next year. Or next year, next month. And you can read the rest of them, but there will be some other changes to the high school curriculum that we will be voting on in March, and we'll talk about this then. But please read the minutes, so that you are up to date on that. We do have a revision to the 2012-2013 school calendar, and I will move for the adoption of resolution number 171, that the school calendar be revised in order to accommodate an act 80-day on May 10th, 2013, for child abuse, reporting, training for all the employees, which is mandated for all school districts. Thank you. It's been moved in seconded, we adopt resolution number 171. Any comments or comments? All those in favor of adopting resolution number 171, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously. I also will move for adoption of resolution number 172 to approve the Westmoreland County Student Assistance Program Agreement for 2013-2014. Second. Thank you, Mrs. Elder. It's been moved in seconded, we adopt resolution number 172. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That also passes unanimously. Resolution number 173 is to approve the curriculum elective for the 2013-2014, and that is the addition of the sculpture ninth-grade class that I just mentioned. So I hereby move for adoption of resolution 173. Second. Thank you. Any questions or comments? On the motion, please.
Could you just give us a little bit of background on why you made that decision and what the requests were from the health, or sorry, the arts department? Where did that came from?
Sure. Sure. Basically, Lydia Mack, who is the department chair for the fine arts, had come to the administration to ask if an elective in the ninth-grade curriculum could be added. It is not taking away the art exploration course that is offered in ninth grade, but it is an additional course for those students who have an interest, may take another or an additional art class in ninth grade. It is not mandated for all students, it is basically by interest only. And the teacher will be Lindsay Dakin. Paige is her marrying. She just recently got married, and she came and spoke to the committee about the kinds of things that would be created in this class. She said there was an interest in this class. She taught the students, took an interest in sculpture, and put it in addition. Any other discussion on the motion? All those in favor of adopting resolution number 173, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously. That ends my report, and I'll turn it over to Mrs. Elder for comments.
I'm going to move in a bundle, resolution number 174, 175, and 176, for adoption, and the treasuries report, the payment of bills, and budget transfers.
It's been moved in seconded, we adopt resolutions number 174, 175, and 176. Any discussion? Questions? All those in favor of approving those three resolutions, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously.
Thank you. And I'll move for adoption of resolution number 177, which is to accept the gifts and grants and donations.
It's been moved in seconded, we adopt resolution number 177. Any discussion? Questions or comments?
I think that these things continue to come, and they're absolutely wonderful, and they enrich the educational experience for all of our students, and I'm always very, very, very thankful for these.
Anyone else? Questions? All those in favor of adopting resolution number 177, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously. You're finished. Thank you, Mrs. Elder. Property and supply, Mrs. Kozar?
Yes, I move for the adoption of resolution number 178, which is the change order for the athletic programs.
Second. It's been moved in seconded, we adopt resolution number 178. Any questions or discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously.
Secondly, I move for the adoption of resolution number 179, to approve a contract with GLA Law and Consultants. Of all your treatment services for all.
He's second. Mr. Hager, second. Thank you.
Just a quick question.
Sure.
Is the...
No, there's no. There's no hall versus mayor.
Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor of adopting resolution number 179, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you, Mrs. Kozar. Student activities and recreation, Dr. Loughlin.
I move for the adoption of resolution 180, stated, and this doesn't notice, it says below, this club has been in existence for years, and is to approve of... Just from the original list.
Second. Thank you. It's been moved in seconded, we adopt resolution number 180. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you, Dr. Loughlin. Community relations, Dr. Zor.
I have the report, but I want to give a shout-out to my PR colleagues, who taken the course at the community college, not the community college, for their licensed nurse for the state, non-physical nurse. Well, I wish we had something controversial about that. They actually said to me, "If you want to see your math..." I can't do math. Yeah, really, thanks for coming. I'll run that number four, the relationships.
Thank you, Dr. Zor.
Westmoreland Intermediate Unit, I will move for adoption of resolution number 181 to approve participation in the Westmoreland Intermediate Unit Joint Purchasing Consortium for the 2013-2014 multi-purpose paper bid.
Second. It's been moved in seconded, we adopt resolution number 181. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
I will move for adoption, resolution number 182, to appoint myself to the Westmoreland Intermediate Unit Board of Directors.
Second. Thank you, it's been moved in seconded, we adopt resolution number 182. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you very much. And that's all. That ends my report, and we'll turn it over to Mrs. Kozar again for WZTC Joint Operating and Report. No report, thank you, Mrs. Kozar. Mrs. Elder, for policy and PSBA liaison.
Yes, I think my work is P S B A, and I have been cut out because of your discussions. So I'll just vote for adoption of resolution number 183, which is final adoption of policy number 610. And remember, these are just changes that have been made, correspond to state law.
It's been moved in seconded, we adopt resolution number 183. Any questions or comments on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously.
And I will move for adoption of resolution number 184, which is the first reading of adoption of board policy 93.1, commercial advertising on the school website and on other school property.
It's been moved in seconded, we adopt resolution number 184. Any questions or comments on that motion?
Other question. When we talked about this in finance, we were talking about the website specifically, right? We talked about the buses, where it's going to work, because it has to be on the inside, and you're not going to go with that, correct?
Correct.
But this says, "Commercial advertising on school property slash website." Does that mean we can sell advertisements for little more of the things on the fences of the football games and of the new stadium here? Is that...
I believe that the intent was to keep somewhat general cases rewarded, some would kind of wish to do that.
And I would kind of all that sort of thing.
Yeah, that's part of that. Okay, I agree with that. The intent currently right now is to strip the website.
Okay.
Good question. Anybody else have a question or comment? All those in favor of adopting resolution number 184, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously.
And finally, I'd move for adoption of resolution number 185, to approve the upgrade of the organizational chart that appears in policy number 008.
Second. It's been moved in seconded, we adopt resolution number 185. Any questions or comments on that motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you, Mrs. Elder. Transportation, Dr. Malloch.
Good evening, my president. We're finishing the February 13 transportation meeting in your packet. I don't know if it's good. Next meeting, so on March 1st, 3:00 PM, and we're going to be working on a operating agreement slash contract with the new bus companies. And should be good meeting. We'll have that in our hand, or can we... So we can look at it. Okay, that's all I have.
Thank you, Dr. Malloch. Technology, Mr. Palmer.
Thank you, Mrs. Z. We have a review that's running 2/12, we're attached with 7/3 in your packet, and our next meeting is March 12th, 6:00 PM here.
Thank you, Dr., Mr. Palmer. Superintendent's recommendations, Mrs. Flyer.
We have quite a few add-ons from last week, so if you would look at resolution number 186, I'd ask the board to move on this resolution, which is the resignation's going to list it. There are the six add-ons. Please note that. But again, I'd ask to move on resolution number 186.
Second. It's been moved consecutively, we adopt resolution number 186. Any questions or comments on that motion?
I'm losing all girl basketball staff.
Yes. The girls' basketball coaches met at, Mr. Beers yesterday, and handed in their resignations. So the positions are open, and I wanted to get it on right away, so hopefully we can get some interest in filling the positions.
The sense I got, and I'm going to have more to say about Coach Fenton in April. It just happened yesterday, so I want to say some things, obviously, about long-term coaching. But I think, in general, in talking with Coach Fenton, that he had just came to the point, his coaching career, where he was ready to be done.
How many years has he done now?
I believe seven, because the day I coached, he coached. And when people ask, he also coached seventh and eighth grade all fall, the girls all winter. It's been a stretch of, like, 14 seasons combined.
So he had been teaching at the school this year?
Yes, he teaches English in the junior high. They all, in fact, all three of them are teachers. Yeah. And he thanked the administration for support in his career, that he just felt it was time that he wanted to move on. I know he references baseball, softball, basketball, he does a lot of officiating too. That's what he told us. And I will, for reflect in April, as in time, one day's time to wrap up reflections of his career.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of adopting resolution number 186, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That also passes unanimously.
I'd ask the board to move on resolution number 187, which is the addition of substitute teachers to our substitute list.
So moved. Second. It's been moved in seconded, we adopt resolution number 187. All those, any discussion or questions on the motion? All those in favor of adopting resolution number 187, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously.
And I'd ask the board to move on resolution number 188, which is to hire Julie Matts as the visually impaired, or a teacher of the visually impaired at Step 3 Masters. If you recall, this is the first woman that was hired in August as a long-term sub until she received her permanent certification, when she has completed all of the necessary information. So we would ask the board to move on resolution number 188.
Second. It's been moved in seconded, we adopt resolution number 188. Any questions or comments, discussion? All those in favor of adopting resolution number 188, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously.
And I'd ask the board to move on resolution number 189, which is the support personnel classified that is still under agenda.
Second. It's been moved in seconded, we adopt resolution number 189. Any questions or discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously.
And the last resolution is number 190, which is the appointment of Mr. Loam Owens as an additional honorary driver education instructor for this school year.
It's been moved. Second. It's been moved in seconded, we adopt resolution number 190. Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Also passes unanimously.
And there are some announcements for everyone under other business. Wizard of Oz tickets are selling quickly, so please, if you're in public, make sure you call to get the tickets as soon as possible, and our meeting's in March are listed.
Thank you, Mrs. Flyer.
I have something that I'd like to tell the board. I would ask, kind of on a quick basis, to come and address a class that begins at college as a member of a municipal government in Pennsylvania. And I did that, and in case anybody here that I was there, I didn't say anything that needed to have a vote. But it was very interesting, because I decided, I've done this before, and every time I do it, I try to ask the teacher what the class has been talking about, and then try to fit my speech into that. And this time, they had had a tax collector and a member of city government in, and so I based my speech on what do school board members do. And it was very interesting, because at first, I thought I was there for an hour. I had been told that the class met between 2:30 and 3:30. So when I was getting to 3:25, I said, "I guess I better hurry up." And the members of the class, and there were only nine of them, and they all looked at me like, "Huh?" And I said, "Well, don't I have to be done at 3:30?" And they said, "Oh, no, we go to 3:45." So we kept on going. And it was very interesting, because I think I kept them awake. First of all, that's not always easy in the middle of an afternoon. I found that out years ago when I taught in a public school. But the thing was, that they were sort of boggled by it all. They kept saying, like, "Huh? Why?" Things like that. So I just kept on going. And then at the end, the only question that was asked had to do with whether cyber charter and homeschool are the same thing. And I was very clear that the answer was no, in big capital letters with exclamation marks. Because evidently, one of the members of the class is thinking about homeschooling his children. There is somebody in his neighborhood who's doing homeschooling. He wanted to know about that. But I did say that I had nothing really good to say about cyber charters, and I thought that none of you would disagree with my having said that. So I want to tell you that I did that.
Thank you. That was an interesting report. Okay. Any other business to come in front of the board this evening? Okay, it's then time for hearing of visitors, part two. If anyone in the audience wishes to address the board on any subject, please come to the podium and state your name and address.
Name, 230, Mrs. Greenberg. Can I just ask a question? How many have you gotten your Wizard of Oz tickets yet? Okay. Just in case you want more info, my daughter happens to be in it this year. They have 50 fourth graders as much as. They have 125 in the cast, total. They are using flight machines. They will be lifting the balloon and blood, and all of them will be in costumes. If you haven't got it yet, there's still tickets. I just picked them up for a neighbor the other day, so.
Thank you very much for that.
If I may add to that, the director, Dan Crappell, next month will be up for standing.
Dr. Primeson is there?
Hello, my name's Philip Long, I live in Las Vegas. Anyhow, a few years ago, I had a problem, and I thought something was wrong, and I had my sister-in-law, Sue Mains, what I could probably do with it, and go from there. And anyhow, she told me what to do, and anyhow, I guess Sue went back and told my sister-in-law, which Diane Gower, who worked with her. And anyhow, you said we were looking into it. And anyhow, three months ago, I came back, and I asked, because investigation was over, and possibly, and I could do another, which anyhow, I gave all the information to Heidi, which anyhow, I didn't tell Heidi we were still looking into this. And anyhow, one of the people on the list, which was basically telling me that one person was coming from another township, going to school there, going home to someplace, and all of a sudden, her dad was, figure out, take her home. She hadn't yet been contacted. So basically, my question is, is somebody here not going to, you know, contacting these people, or, you know, what's going on? So anyhow, last month, at the township building, Ms. Ron was down there, and basically, she said, "These guys form little committees, and everybody knows basically what's going on." And I'm just figuring if somebody brings up what I brought up three months ago, that somebody should be investigating, and you all should know basically what's going on. I haven't been contacted back saying, you know, what happened, or what's going on at all. So, you know, I would like to know at least, you know, what's going on, maybe get it back in writing or whatever. The one lady that gave me this information, basically, she pays a lot of property tax in the county township, and she basically wants to know what's going on. So, you know, I would at least like to get back to me as soon as... So, you know, I would at least like to, you know, get back to you as soon as possible, because, you know, I still think this is wrong, same thing I brought up three months ago. Okay?
Would anyone else care to go to the board this evening? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. It's been moved in second and we adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone aye? We are adjourned, and it would be time to see you again.